Okay, good evening, everyone. We have some special guests here tonight that are going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, right? Okay, so we're all gonna stand up.
I think it's gonna introduce them. Just to let you know, I had the pleasure of visiting Ms. Rivera at UPK about a month or so ago, and these four amazing students, it was arrival time, doing the pledge, and then the UPK pledge, I was so impressed, I said, "You have to come to the board meeting," and they took me up in my office, so I'm very, very proud of that, and thankful. So I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Rivera.
Hi, thank you so much for having us. Good evening. Thank you for having our youngest marauders here today as well, and I want to thank the parents for bringing them, because I know we had a late night last night as well. I'll let Ms. Conway introduce them.
Thank you, everybody. We're so excited to be here. We have Maeve Cole, we have Aurora Villamar, we have Chloe Holmes, and Noah Calix Ruiz. So we're thrilled to be here.
Awesome. Ready, ready, go. Go ahead, ready?
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to be republic, with its hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in the deep, in justice for all.
Thank you, shout out.
Thank you, good job.
So we have a little gift for you guys for coming and to our meeting today, and we're gonna take a picture with you, if that's okay. Come on over here. too. Come on. I always get here, and when we see students, it makes me so happy, especially familiar Ready? Big smile. Thanks for visiting. faces.
Thank you.
All right, onto the meeting. So you're gonna go over zones of regulation with us.
Yes, so those zones of regulation is an evidence-based program that teaches students to identify their emotions, as well as tools as to how to regulate or manage those emotions. It is designed for very young students, starting at age four, which what's wonderful about it, it's something that we can do with all of our three different programs that we have at the UPK program. So this also does expand through upper grades, but for the purpose of our building, we are going to implement this building-wide with everyone. It meets the needs of neurodiverse students, as it is very easy to modify, and also very visually presented. The program does provide very neutral language, so if you turn to page three, there are some examples there of, instead of saying this, try saying this, which will bring very common language to our building, as well with our classroom management, when we are working with very young children that are really learning how to identify how they feel. It improves communication and also core regulation for students, staff, and caregivers. And by core regulation, it is assisted and facilitated through with an adult working with the child. Ms. Buhan has implemented this program with some of her students already, and I would like for her to share some of the applications and also modifications, as well as the success that she's had with being able to work with families, for them to carry over the same type of systems and responses and language at home and school. And if you see, I know you're turning to that page, we have it in English, Spanish, and French. For a lot of things, there's also a lot of posters for our classrooms, in addition to training that's embedded with this, and curriculum.
So for students that cannot expressively identify their emotion by saying, "I'm angry," they're able to point to the color, which still allows them to express how they're feeling. With modified materials, I've used items like this for a student to match or point what tool they need, to get them from, let's say, the red zone back to green. This is easy to modify and individualize to any student's needs, for the most diverse needed students with the most, excuse me, for the students with the most diverse needs, to those that have different communication styles, it's great for young learners and those with special needs. The program was met with very positive engagement from my staff and from the parents that I'd implemented it with in the past, after some minimal training for parents, they were able to carry it over in the home, even going as far as parents scaring me in the morning and being like, "So-and-so was in the red zone, got on the bus in the blue zone," just so you have a heads up. So now my staff and I were able to meet them at the bus with the tools to get them back to green. Staff, after training, became very proficient and still use it, they're like, "Oh, you're in the green zone, that's great," or, "Your friend over there is in the red zone, yeah, but let's just keep moving," they're gonna use their tools to get them back to green. It's a great program. Everyone's very, everyone I've ever used it with is very happy.
I've also touched base with ACLD, since we do have two special classrooms there for Bay Shore-Brightwooder students, they're fully on board also with participating, so I'm excited to be able to do something building-wide that really meets the needs of all our learners, regardless of what program or grade that they are at UPK.
I love it.
Oh, good.
This is like, you know, right up my alley.
And, you know, it's just like Ms. Buhan said, you know, some of our students still can't identify and articulate specifically how they feel, but they quickly are able to pick up where those emotions lie, in which type of zone, and then because it is so visually represented, we're able to really teach, you know, something that I feel like it's a life skill for many children, so starting at age four, and being able to do this building-wide is really exciting.
Awesome. I might use this in my office. To work with adults.
Yes, I know. Yes, it can work with everyone.
Some of the high school teachers are like, "Can I have a copy of that?"
It does go through upper grades, you know, we are looking to be the first ones to implement it building-wide, and then see how it goes, but it does expand to upper grades, it's not an elementary-only program.
And this is just for you guys right now, are we thinking of taking it to...
Right now, we're just starting with UPK.
Yeah, it'd be nice if they could take it then into the early elementary, because now it's a system they're comfortable with.
Ms. Garg, we have actually utilized this with our staff, similar modified version, there's an upper level that goes through some Yale University research that is very similar, so it feeds very well with that, and we have used this with our staff, where they have identified the word, the zone that they're in. So yeah, it's very seamless across all of us.
We did a very simple model of presentation on a cabinet, with Dr. Maloney. I'm sorry?
Has this been implemented in other school districts locally?
I'm not familiar with other school districts that have implemented it, we have implemented it with certain students specifically, and had success with them, but it has been implemented in other schools, not that I'm familiar with, I know the research does show that it has been successful in school-based programs, yes.
So the common question on board is just the cost.
Yeah.
So...
So the cost, we're able to cover it through a grant, Suffolk Edge Teachers Center Grant.
Awesome.
Yeah, and we should be all covered for that.
And is that like a year-to-year grant, is it a year-to-year, like bill, is it, does it encompass a number of years, what's the kind of parameter of it?
It's a year-to-year grant, yes, that we would have to apply for each year.
Just every year, apply for it, and that grant covers whatever, all the costs, materials, et cetera, et cetera?
Yes. It actually aligned very well, almost meant to be.
Yeah, perfect.
We were really, when we spoke with Ms. Herrick about it, it really aligned very well with what we needed.
Perfect, good. I look forward to hearing more about it.
Good.
So then my last question, what are the costs, though, that the grant covers?
The grant is $6,000, and this comes just a little bit under, which would be, from the cost that we have, it would be about $300 less than that.
Is there specific training, and does the company do it?
Yes, so we already met with the company, just to get all the information upfront before we presented it to all of you, for what we're looking for, because there are different levels of training, as you get into the upper grades, there are additional trainings, so for what we're looking for, which is our basic training, it's two hours and 45 minutes of online training, plus additionally, we would have a Q&amp;A with a person, so that we can have contact with them, and also quarterly meetings as well. So that's what the basic level training. For what we're looking for, implementation with our grade band, I believe that the basic training will cover the needs that we have in our building.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, thank you for having us.
Thank you, thank you so much. All right, next up, Mr. Agostino.
Just before he starts, I had a conversation with Agostino probably about a month or so ago, because I know our students do just some amazing things for our community, and I think this past year was really demonstrated by multiple, you know, of our fall sports teams, so when I had a conversation with Mr. Agostino, I'd just kind of like to recognize the efforts of what our students are doing, so I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Agostino.
Thank you, and again, thank you for having us here tonight. This is a great opportunity for us to not just talk about how great we're doing in the fields and on the court, this is much bigger than that. This is about life, this is about something that, you know, we're trying to make a difference, and we're trying to let people bring awareness to what's really important. It's near and dear to my heart, I lost both my parents to cancer, they fought like hell, they died, and, you know, this opportunity, what they're doing for the people and the cancer awareness, it's incredible. So what I'm gonna do is, because I'm not gonna talk too much, I know I like to talk a little bit, but I'm gonna kind of gear it down a little bit, I'm gonna bring up the girls volleyball, you know, players that are here, and Coach Solinger first, and they'll kind of talk a little bit about it, so that's how we're gonna do it. Coach, girls, come on.
Right into it.
Right into it. So I am Coach Jamie Solinger, I brought with me...
I'm Emily May, I'm a senior on the girls volleyball team.
I'm Kelsey Kennedy, I'm a junior.
So this is about our 20th year of doing the Dig Pink fundraiser around, I've been here for five years, I graduated 10 years ago from here, and we were doing it then, and I know we were doing it before that, so the past two years, we actually decided to change up where we're donating our money, so I'm gonna pass it off to the girls.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate, so over the past few years, we've been participating in this amazing Dig Pink fundraiser, and especially within the past two years, we have decided to donate our funds to the West Islip Cancer Coalition. I just want to emphasize that this Dig Pink fundraiser means so much to the girls volleyball team and sports in general, it proves that sports is less than a game, but more of community coming together and under one shared cause.
Yeah, and this year, we raised a total of $1,100, and of that, $300 of those dollars came from CHM North when they raised that money throughout the school day.
Wow. Nice.
Next up, I'm gonna bring up Coach Jensen and Coach Mangles, and with their players to talk about. By the way, these both teams were county finalists, and that might beat us, but we're gonna get next, thanks for bringing that up, sorry.
I was gonna just keep my mouth shut.
I know, they were all thinking it already.
Those wounds, those wounds never go away.
You guys had great teasing.
Ladies, connect one will always be on the go rate.
Four years, twice we've lost a connect one in my coaching, but we won't talk about that anymore.
That's how we're here for.
Exactly, so guys, first off, I want to say thank you guys very much for having us here, I appreciate everything that you guys do to allow us to share the court with these amazing young men. So this is our first year doing the Dig Pink volleyball game, we were very, very happy to bring awareness to, we got all these nice shirts to go with our fancy pants that we were rocking this year.
Those are some fancy pants.
Next year, we're thinking about getting pink ones, we'll see, but it was a great, great night, this was, like I said, our first year doing it. We did not do a fundraiser to raise any funds for it, but it was more about bringing awareness, and now, like I said, for the third time, this was our first time, so now, moving forward, I would like to put a lot more plans ahead to raise those funds and do a little bit more with that night, but I brought these young men here to kind of talk about the awareness and the effect and everything that it has with our community. So with me tonight, I have...
Let you introduce yourselves.
Senior, Niall Hockney.
James Huber, Jr.
And Jarav Gonzalez, I'm a senior.
And I'll let you guys, I'm just kind of talking about the...
I just want to talk about sniffing some of it and bringing awareness to it, through these games, you really highlight, obviously, breast cancer, and you don't know who it affects, we have a teammate who severely affects, it's mom, actually, and you don't know who it affects, or whether they're hiding it, or they've already lost someone to it, or whatever, but it's just good to get the awareness out there, make people start thinking about it, and just doing stuff for the brand.
Yeah, it's just a big problem that happens to everyone, you really have no way of telling when you can get it or not, so just bringing awareness to these things, it makes it just more than just volleyball, it makes it just bring the community together, and it just really helps everyone, and once, if you can start raising money eventually, it just, getting closer to the cure would be just amazing for just the community.
Yeah, I think it's definitely a great game, in order to, you know, obviously, raise awareness, but also, there's a lot of people that it affects, I know, you know, we have a kid on our team that his mom has breast cancer, also, I have a friend, a family friend that also has breast cancer, so it's definitely awesome to get the whole community together, you know, we had our pink socks, our pink shirts, but also to know that we're, you know, we're out there, we're playing not only for ourselves, but also to raise awareness. And on top of that, I think, what is it, what's I want to say? Trying to think, what's I want to say? I think that's good, thank you. Yes, once again, I want to say thank you guys very much, thank you, thank you.
Like the college shirts.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you guys.
Okay, so next up, my soccer coach is not here yet, but I'm gonna bring up Coach Drago and her kids for field hockey, because they, you know, did a great job with it also. Coach Drago, oh, Coach Brady's here also.
Not that one.
Hi, I'm Chelsea Kleppf, I'm a senior on the team.
Hi, I'm Sophia Braddock, I'm a senior on the team.
Hi, I'm Abigail De Natale, and I'm a senior.
Hi, I'm Cindy Shoff, and I'm a junior.
So we've been doing the breast cancer awareness game since 2004, about 20 years now, and every single year, we do it along with another team, like this year, Massapeak will win pink shirts to our game, wore pink shirts to our game, and we always do it with the middle school team, the JV team, and the varsity team, so.
Our breast cancer game is a big, like, community builder, and it's like a huge fun event that we bring a lot of people out to, like, I think I've been going to the breast cancer game since I was in fifth grade, and it's a really good way to mix the middle school JV and varsity teams together, and along with just playing the game, we also have raffle baskets, and like a bake sale and food, and it becomes like a little party on the sidelines, so it's like a great community builder, and this year, me and Abby, and along with a few of the other upperclassmen on the team, actually spent a day going around to Islip and Bay Shore and Babylon, and we were able to get 20 donations to help support our game, and also our scholarship fund, which Abby's gonna talk about.
So we raise our money for the Marian Sarette Foundation, which is very important to us, because one of our alumni, it's in memory of her mother, and that family always comes out to the game, and there's a scholarship that's about $500 given to a female athlete out of like anyone of the teams, but our, like, team won, one of the girls last year won it, and it's just very important, because it's not just a game, it has like a deep meaning within the field hockey community.
It's also a great community building, because all the teams do it, the middle schoolers, the JV, the high school, well, the varsity team, and we all go to each other's games, for example, we went to the middle school game, the middle schoolers watched us, JV watched us, we watched JV, it's a huge community building moment for a special cause, because it does affect everyone, everyone has had someone who has been affected by breast cancer and cancer, so it's just a great way to bring the community together and bring all the teams together as well.
Thank you.
So unfortunately, soccer's not here right now, I think they got their times crossed, but again, I want to thank you for bringing us out here, because again, this is much bigger than winning and losing, this is about awareness, this is about making a difference, and those kids right there, they don't realize how powerful it is, and they're starting to kind of get that, that to me is everything, that replaces every championship in the world right there, is doing what they're doing every day, so thank you for you guys doing that. Thank you, everybody.
Chris, I just, you know, all the athletes, you know, you guys, I don't think you realize how much of a mentor you are, way down below, within the living field, with the summer camps you guys do, it's so important that we keep sharing all of that in the community, and passing it down, and doing all that, being a part of a team, and going down to learn what your coach taught you, to teach, you don't even realize you're becoming teachers yourselves, and being involved in the community, it's so important to keep involved and engaged, and all those kid programs, and all that stuff coming up, and you know what, making somebody say hello, you know, these kids, they come all clammed up sometime, when they leave that camp with you guys, they're all your friends, and that's important, and you know, you really don't realize, being a mentor in the community, you guys have been great mentors, and that's why you have that support when you're here, and we always give that support, our board has always been a support, when I wrestled here, and everything like that, and I did all my sports, and football, and all that, we always were that type of community, you guys, you guys have took it to such another level, like Mary Drago, when she was playing, I watched her play here, and all that stuff, when she was playing, when I got out of the Navy, she was here playing, she was always had that little bit, when Mr. McGowan was here and all of that, you guys have just took it to another level, don't ever stop reaching for your goals, don't ever stop doing what you gotta do, always make that goal higher, and you'll be the best person in your life, you're doing a great job, thank you.
So I do have one soccer player here, do you want to talk a little bit about the cancer awareness? Come on up.
Look at that.
Perfect.
That was pretty good, he said, "Do you want to talk?" He usually just said, "Yes."
Hi, my name is Sophia Vega, and I've been in the varsity soccer team for two years, and I just want to talk about, you know, what we were doing for Kids for Cancer. So Kids for Cancer was started in 2008 by Hop Dog Soccer Coach Jessica. In 2011, the Suffolk County Girls Soccer Coaches Association got involved and got 24 other schools to participate in Kids for Cancer. Bay Shore was one of those schools. The amount of money donated nearly doubled in 2011 due to the added support. On average, Suffolk County girls soccer teams currently raise about $80,000 per season, in which this put us over $1 million in total money raised over a 15-year period. The money that is raised goes to local organizations and families, so some of them have been the Making Headway Foundation, the American Cancer Society, Islip Breast Cancer Coalition, and the local Ronald McDonald House, as well as many local families who are battling cancer in some way. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for coming.
Come on up. Come on up.
Sorry about that.
Now he comes, she handled it well by her own.
Beautiful job.
Thank you.
She's the one that starts practice, right?
All right. Where were we?
Are you, are you going or not?
I'll wrap it up, I'll tell you that, let me hear what you're gonna say, I'll finish it up for you.
Hi, I'm Erin Wolf. Kids for Cancer Today, there are currently over 50 soccer teams that participate in Kids for Cancer. This is not limited to only girls high school teams, we now have boys teams, middle school teams, as well as local college teams and semi-professional teams that contribute. This year, we have raised over...
That was pretty good. He said, do you want to talk? He usually says yes.
Hi, my name is Sophia Vega and I've been in the varsity soccer team for two years. And I just want to talk about, you know, what we were doing for Kicks for Cancer. So Kicks for Cancer was started in 2008 by Hop Hogs soccer coach Jessica. In 2011, the Suffolk County Girls Soccer Coaches Association got involved and got 24 other schools to participate in Kicks for Cancer. Bay Shore was one of those schools. The amount of money donated nearly doubled in 2011 due to the added support. On average, Suffolk County girls soccer teams currently raise about $80,000 per season, in which this put us over 1 million in total money raised over a 15-year period. The money that is raised goes to local organizations and families. So some of them have been the Making Headway Foundation, the American Cancer Society, Islip Breast Cancer Coalition, and the local Ronald McDonald House, as well as many local families who are battling cancer in some way. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Come on up.
Sorry about that.
Now he comes. She handled it well by her own.
Beautiful job.
Thank you.
She's the one that starts practice, right?
All right.
Are you, are you going or not?
You, I'll, I'll wrap it up. I'll tell you that. Let me hear what you're going to say. I'll finish it up for you.
Hi, I'm Erin Wolf. Kids for Cancer today, there are currently over 50 soccer teams that participate in, in Kids for Cancer. This is not limited to only girls high school teams. We now have boys teams, middle school teams, as well as local college teams and semi-professional teams that contribute. This year, we have raised over $80,000 for Kids for Cancer. Teams will raise money through raffle ticket sales and other fundraisers. In Bay Shore, we play a Kids for Cancer game in which we wear pink shirts and socks and use pink soccer balls. We also invite local youth teams to watch and act as honorary ball girls for the game. Let me say Lindsay's name?
Yeah.
Okay. Kids for Cancer in the future. As a team, we will continue to participate in Kids for Cancer by raising money and playing a game for Kids for Cancer. Suffolk County Girls Soccer Coaches Association is always looking to assist families battling cancer. Next year or any future year, we would like to play a game in honor of a Bay Shore family that we can raise money for. This can also be done anonymously. Thank you.
All right. So, yeah, thank you and nice to see everybody. So just a little bit of a background that I'm sure Sophia mentioned, sort of the conception and the history behind Kicks for Cancer. And it was created by the Hop Hog coach Jessica Calusa. I'm not sure if she mentioned that. But back in 2008, Jessica had a student, wasn't a soccer player, wasn't a member of the soccer team, but she went to the soccer games. And unfortunately, in 2008, she passed away with brain cancer. And at that moment, Jessica wanted to bring awareness and raise money for the family. And she started this. It started off as a Hop Hog thing. It's become much bigger. It's a Long Island thing now. It's just, it's a nice opportunity for us to be part of something bigger, right? It puts things into perspective. When we go to a, uh, another game where we see the other team wearing their pink shirts and we know it's their Kicks for Cancer game, it just puts things into perspective. And, you know, it gives awareness to soccer is great and we're passionate about soccer, but it's just a small piece of really what this is all about. And, and conversely, when other teams come to us, they see that we have our youth teams and they know it's a special game. Again, it helps to, for all of us to feel like we're part of a bigger community. And that's really, I'm sure, like, a lot of what the teams are talking about tonight. And it's really, you know, it's a great opportunity to be part of and thanks for letting us share that with you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Appreciate everything. Okay. Have a nice night.
Thank you to the students.
Thank you, guys, for coming.
Thank you. Thanks for coming out, guys.
Okay. And then there were two, right? Ms. Versenj, would you like to discuss the energy contract?
Yes. I have a very brief update. If you remember...
Thank you so much. The last time we talked about this, we talked about eliminating solar, right?
Correct.
So they came back to us with a proposal in which they left the roofing. And if you remember, a lot of the roofing, we were redoing to support the solar. Not that it doesn't need to, need, it doesn't, not that it doesn't need to be done, but maybe it doesn't need to be done now. Or by them. Yeah. So I asked them to go back and redo it again and take the roofs out and add in the boilers that we have already designed and set up to SED and gotten approved. I have them estimated at about 3.3 million. They have 1.9 in, uh, left in the project. You know, because the payback on the roof, the 18-year payback on the roof wasn't very good, right? So why am I... So this morning, they called and they said they think they can get it in. They think they can get all three boilers in. And that's really the way to go because they're also doing the control systems in these buildings. So if they're doing the control systems, they may as well put the boilers in so that everything connects properly and we don't have issues with that in the future. So I think that's the direction in which we're going, but I'm still waiting for a proposal with numbers. So hopefully, um, in December at our public session, I'll be able to have the actual amendment to the contract for you so that we can keep pushing forward, so that we can be working on that this summer. Okay. All right? Sounds good. Great. And then we're on policies, two policies. Dr. Outlaw, you're taking the first one? Second read.
So before you is the policy as it would be presented. This is our second read. The last share of information was with the additions of the two areas, one being the change with the 100 hours. And then the addition of the paragraph under the other professional staff, as well as the addition of a percentage of time that needed to be dedicated to the English language learners. And so I present it to you now as the second read to see if there are any additional questions that you may have.
I don't think so. Any questions? Kyle Lou, you good?
I was good.
Okay.
Thank you.
And the second read for the second policy, Mr. Pashkin.
Thank you. So in your packet, you also have the second read for the homebound instruction. Just a quick reminder that homebound instruction is for students who are unable to attend school due to a diagnosed physical, mental, or emotional reason that is qualified by a healthcare professional as opposed to home instruction, which is a parental choice to educate the child at home. Again, the language is a little bit confusing. So this has been updated with the information that was provided in the first read, but is listed without any of the notes or other information. The third paragraph includes the most recent information regarding the increase in hours that has taken place within the last few years. And the rest of the document talks a little bit about the process and how that would take place, along with the tutors that are available and where they would be coming from in order to provide the instruction to the students with the goal of the students being able to return to the classroom as quickly as possible without any loss of information or content.
Okay. Any questions?
Any questions?
The age of 21 was always there, right?
The age of 21 was in the most recent update, which was from a few years ago. Prior, I do not believe that was in there because that is a more recent age range. In the past, I think it was typically 18.
It used to be 23. Didn't they lower it a little bit and went...
I don't believe so.
But I'm wondering if it's, if it's going to change though.
There's something coming with 22. 23 remembers or 22 is in my head about something.
Well, it's 20, probably 22 now because the special ed range went up. So this will probably go to 22.
Yeah, I, I remember that discussion.
Can I ask a question? So can we just delve into it? So if it's coming, then we can perhaps put into it that, you know, the policy will be this until X date, at which point it will change to age 22, if that's what's necessary.
I'll find out.
It might be something that would be in right now because the student...
I don't know. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, this was the most recent...
Special ed students used to go till 21. That age of compliance is now 22.
So we'll look into that and see.
The day of their 22nd birthday, even if, even if it's mid-year.
It sticks in my head for some reason.
Because you do think students could stay through, like, if you were 21, say, in March, you could stay till June.
Right, right. Till the 22nd birthday.
Could this just be tied, this regulation, just be tied to that?
Whatever you find out.
This is probably a more global kind of a, of a policy that covers all students. That particular age range is specified to special education students. So that would, could be the reason why the ages are not the same. But I will talk to Mr. Torres about that and see if he can...
Good question.
Thank you.
Okay. That's the entire... Yeah, we are going to make it a motion to go out of work.
Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so carried. In order to go into executive, I have a motion to go into public first. Motion to go into public.
Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
With a motion to go into executive.
For?
The purpose of legal.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so carried.
We dotted the i across the table.
And we'll be back at six.
Public session.
Moment.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. So carried. We're not getting situated. We do the pledge, you want to pledge again?
You should do it again.
Okay, I'm gonna do the pledge again. Can we please stand? And Lou, would you lead us out?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm gonna assume there's no questions on the agenda. Do you have any questions on the agenda? Okay. I would like to say that we're celebrating, are we celebrating Caitlin's birthday, which is next week? So I wanna make sure everybody knows Caitlin's birthday is next week. So we wish her a happy birthday.
Oh, these flowers weren't for me.
No, they're not for you, Doug. Okay, so we'll go right into A1, motion to approve the Board of Education minutes of the executive work and public sessions of October 29th, 2025. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Mr. Pashkin, wanna kick us off with B1?
Sure. On page B1, the board will find a motion to approve the professional staff requests for leave as listed, we recommend its approval.
Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so carried. B2?
On page B2, the board will find a motion to approve the professional staff appointments as listed, we recommend its approval.
Motion.
Second.
That was fast. Can I, wait, motion second ca- all in favor?
Aye.
You were too fast for me. So carried. B3?
On page B3, the board will find a motion to approve the professional staff special appointments as listed, we recommend its approval.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. B4?
On page B4, the board will find a motion to approve the professional staff salary changes as listed, we recommend its approval.
Okay, motion?
Second.
No, can I get a motion? Motion.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor? Aye, so carried.
Rather wacky.
B5?
On page B5, the board will find a motion to approve the civil service resignations and retirements and terminations as listed, we recommend its approval.
Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. B6?
On page B6, the board will find a motion to approve the civil service request for leave as listed, we recommend its approval.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So carried. B7?
On page B7, the board will find a motion to approve the civil service reinstatements as listed, we recommend its approval.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so carried. B8, B8A.
On page B8 and B8A, the board will find a motion to approve the civil service appointments as listed, we recommend its approval.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. B9, B9A.
On page B9? B9A, the board will find a motion to approve the list of substitute appointments, we recommend its approval.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so carried, sorry. B10?
On page B10, the board will find a motion to approve the PM school teacher appointments as listed for the 25-26 school year, we recommend its approval.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. B11, B11A.
On page B11 to B11A, the board will find a motion to approve the civil service change in assignments as listed, we recommend its approval.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. B12?
On page B12, the board will find a motion to approve the civil service salary changes as listed, we recommend its approval.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. B13, B13A.
On page B13 to B13A, the board will find a motion to approve the X schedule and club advisors for the 25-26 school year as presented, we recommend its approval.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. B14?
On page B14, the board will find a motion to approve the coach X schedules for the Department of Health Physical Education Athletics for the 25-26 school year, we recommend its approval.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. B15?
And on page B15, the board will find a motion to approve the volunteers for the 25-26 school year, we recommend its approval.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Okay, Maureen, you're up. C1, C1A through H.
On pages C1 and C1A through H, the board will find a motion to accept and place on file the financial and claims auditor reports for July of 2025, we recommend its approval.
Okay.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. C2 and C2A.
On pages C2 and C2A, the board will find a motion to approve the budget transfer. On page C2A, we recommend its approval.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. C3?
On page C3, the board will find a motion to authorize, to both authorize the transfer from the insurance reserve and to create a corresponding general fund budget revision totaling $3,750 for payment of a settlement agreement, we recommend its approval.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. C4 and C4A.
On pages C4 and C4A, the board will find a motion to accept and place on file the external audit management letter response, or also known as the CAP, for the Bayshore UFSD for the 2024-2025 school year, we recommend its approval.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. C5?
On page C5, the board will find a motion to authorize the Board of Education President to execute agreements on its behalf with the YMC of Long Island for UPK services for the 2025-2026 school year, we recommend its approval.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. C6 and C6A.
On pages C6 and C6A, the board will find a motion to approve the 2025-2026 per child tuition rate for health and welfare services at the rate of $1,428.78 and that contracts for the, for these services be entered into with those school districts that have non-resident students attending schools in the Bayshore school, private schools in the Bayshore School District.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. C7, C7A.
C7 and C7A are opposite. It's a motion to approve health service contracts for the 2025-2026 school year for Bayshore residents attending private or parochial schools within other school districts, in particular those named on page C7A, we recommend its approval.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. C8 and C8A.
On pages C8 and C8A, the board will find a motion to declare as obsolete the attached list of unused books from the English Department, we recommend its approval.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Dr. Outlaw?
On, on page D1, the board will find a motion to approve the Committee on Special Education for Services for the students listening to CSC minutes on the dates listed and the annual reviews for the 25-26 school year, as well as referrals for October and November of 2025, we recommend its approval.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. D2?
On page D2, the board will find a motion to endorse actions taken by the Bayshore Committee on Preschool Special Education for preschool special education services as noted in the minutes on the dates listed, we recommend its approval.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. D3?
On page D3, the board will find a motion to adopt the individual home instruction plans for the 25-26 school year, as noted, we recommend its approval.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Dr. Maloney? We have E1, E1A through D.
On page E1, E1A through D, the board will find a motion to approve and authorize the Board President to execute a contract between the Bayshore Unit Free School District and Hoshua University for the purpose of student observation and fieldwork through June 30th, 2026, we recommend its approval.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. E2, E2A through D.
On page E2, E2A through D, the board will find a motion to approve and hereby authorize the Superintendent of Schools to execute a stipulation settlement of a complaint filed with the New York State Education Department, case number 658310, we recommend its approval.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Okay, at this time, we will take any questions or comments from the audience on non-agenda items. Tanya? Hi, how are you? How are you?
I'm nervous, as always. I brought copies.
I'll take them.
I was working on my phone, but. Hello, hi, everybody. Tanya Weiss, I know I haven't been here in a little bit. Summer's my busy time of year and Jackson is back in school, which is great. So I appreciate everybody's help in making that happen, especially Mr. Pashkin. He's thriving. The environment is wonderful. And he just finished, well, he's finishing 45 weeks of outside therapy, 45 hours of outside therapy, which should be really beneficial in his core strength and things like that, so I'm excited for what that means. Tanya Weiss, 21 Fairway Court. I know I've been here in the past, I'm coming with very specific things. I am nervous, I get really emotional, so I wanted to come last month, but it was kinda last minute for me. So I'm here tonight as a member of the community and as someone who cares deeply about the safety of our students. I hate reading because it's a little less emotional, so, but I wanted to make sure I got everything out. Our community has watched our survivors carry the weight of their experience for years, some for decades, and I know everyone here has been affected in one way or another. Over the past month or so, we've been reminded that harm caused by sexual misconduct in school settings does not disappear with time. It's my opinion that we owed it to the CVA survivors and every child in this district to make sure what happened before could never happen again, and yet, in October, we're here again. I know I've spoken in the past from a place of emotion and hope that things would be addressed, and I understand that nobody here can talk about cases due to ongoing litigation. However, I've asked in the past what we're doing to change things as far as the culture and the protocol in order to protect the children. And I, I might be wrong, so I have questions and I would love to have answers either tonight or in the future. I've not seen us spend money or time to bring in programs to effect change or to set up anonymous reporting or even know what the investigation procedures are and how the documentations of findings are passed on within changes to leadership in buildings and at a district level. This is a little personal to me because I did ask for some investigation with Jackson, and I understand that employees get protected, but how do we make sure the new building administration and any new superintendents know, you know, that somebody is not allowed on property as is the case, you know, in this most recent news cycle? So tonight, this is what I'm asking. I just think we need clear, concrete steps to protect our students for the future, and maybe this is already in the works. Here's some of the things I'm interested in understanding, what we have in place and what the board's oversight is and making sure they exist. What is the training for our staff and our coaches and especially our students with regard to how grooming works? Apologize if I get emotional. What healthy boundaries look like and how to recognize that behavior? Do we have that in place for our students? Can't answer, okay. Can you answer any of these? Maybe not.
More than likely, I'm gonna refer to somebody from the district, we'll review them.
Okay.
With, with some consideration of what's the steps and what we can answer and what we can't answer.
Got it, okay, so maybe we could talk about, yeah, no, that's fine, I, I don't know where to start with this, right, but nobody here is necessarily doing any of these things, but we're not, and we're not, there's, it's all over, right? It's not just our district, but we've always been the district to spark, to start the sparks, right? To do things different. We, we're one of the first districts to create all these wonderful extra sections and bring our special new, like, I didn't think Jackson would ever be in a Bayshore building. He's been in the middle school and the high school, and maybe if he was a little bit younger, he would've been at Mary G when I told my daughter, probably not, Ken, probably not. So I just think that there's a way for us to lead the, the path with this stuff, anyway.
But before you go on, you shouldn't be nervous.
Oh, I am.
This is not, I know, but this is not an adversarial thing going on here.
I don't think it is.
We appreciate the fact that you're here and it's helpful that you put these things down on paper, your questions, so they're not gonna be able to answer them tonight, but, but it's, it's helpful.
I appreciate it. Not nervous because it's, not nervous because of anybody here, just.
No, it's great, you should do it, but if you, like I said, you took the time to do it, it's really good. Should've got it to the district, when you have this, get it to her first, we can maybe have some answers when you come here. So if you had this like yesterday.
Yeah, I wrote it today in therapy, in therapy with Jackson while Jackson was in therapy on my phone, I get it.
The moms do the best they can.
I appreciate that. No, I, I honestly, that's why it's.
I'd love to have answers for you when you come.
Okay, perfect.
As best we can.
Do you want me to read it then, still?
Yes. Yes, you're here, absolutely.
Okay. Second question, what's the policy for transparent handling of incidents? In, in other words, reassignment of, of staff to other schools or other places? Quiet resolutions bother me personally, without getting into details. Are investigations independent? Is it outside or do we do them ourselves? My opinion is students need to be safe and have accessible ways to report concerns and that they are believed without fear of retaliation? Like, is there an anonymous reporting system that we could set up where if they see something for their friend or they find something out from their friend, they could go and say, hey, I don't think it's cool that my friend's texting with so-and-so? That kinda thing. And I deal with this in my line of work too, so. Is there a program like Megan's Law or something else that schools bring in to kinda help us navigate rebuilding that culture here in the district? I know other districts have done things like that, is that something we could consider doing? And then lastly, can we implement regular public review? Because I think the biggest thing is rebuilding confidence in the community, especially with a lot of our CVA survivors in the district, with kids in the district and siblings' kids in the district and things of that nature. Anyway, I, I didn't think any of these things were necessarily complicated, none of them unreasonable, but together, I think we can create, and I say we, right? I really believe that we can create a culture where predators can't slip through the cracks and where their students know they're protected, heard, and valued. Our community has already spoken a number of times, and I don't think anybody's ever gonna forget what has happened, but I think we can accept anything other than real change. And then, you know, just to the board, I know it's different levels here, so can, you know, can we lead with transparency and consistency and urgency? And I know that goes in line with cases being solved. But I just think we need things rewritten and enforced in a different way, just so we can change the future. Anyway, thank you for your attention.
I appreciate this. We do, and I think it, it just gives us another path for a conversation we've having and we can continue to have, and then determine what, how, what and how we share outwardly. There are limitations.
For sure.
You know, there, there really are. The word transparency is tough. So there's just some, some tough things that are hard to.
Yeah, I know, and I know transparency is tough with, with specific people, right? Or specific incidences, but if I call and I say, this is what I feel is happening in the classroom, and then I'm talking to an administrator who says, we're gonna investigate, we'll, we'll let you know, we can't tell you the specifics, but what happens? What happened, what's the transparency there? What happens? What, what things are put into place to make sure that can't happen again? I have a non-verbal student, I have to guess. Right? I have to guess.
I totally understand that.
And I've been through PPS and, and Mr. Pashkin knows, like, I'm not allowed to talk to the person that literally changes him. So there's practices and policies that.
Be careful talking about.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, no, I'm saying, I'm saying the practice of the district is that a parent doesn't talk to a parent. Is that, is that vague enough? No?
Yes, that's.
Okay. So because of that, because of the environment that a nonverbal student is in, when I say, hey, this is the issues that I think are there, I, like, there's just, if I just knew that, well, we're gonna investigate this, and then this, yes, there was some findings, or there were not, and this is the changes that we're implementing, and this is the training we're gonna pay, maybe it's sensitivity training in that case, right, in a different type of a situation. And these are the things we're gonna do without getting into specifics about an employee. I don't know, I, I'm not trying to say anybody's job is easy, I just think that.
Yeah, listen, they're, they're good questions and certainly things that can keep the conversation moving.
Okay.
Fair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tanya.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you. And congratulations on the job over there.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I wanted you.
Okay, there was nobody else listed, um, does anybody else have anything to comment or question?
We just, you wanna do David's report?
Yes, we'll do David's report as well. And then, if anybody else has anything to say.
Okay, so, good evening, I'm excited to share my report for the.
No, green.
No, his is on. I turned mine on.
Oh, okay, sorry, sorry.
Thank you. I'm excited to share my, uh, report for the month of November for our schools in the district. So, UPK hosted a family engagement night to discuss academic achievement and assessments. They are presently running a read-a-thon, the top five classes will have an ice cream party, and students have opportunities to win multiple prizes. The 21st of November is their next morning munchies, family-style breakfast with building staff. Brook Avenue School hosted its first recognition rally, celebrating students for strong attendance, role model behavior, and achievement. They also recognized Dr. Blanco Dobbins for school psychologist week and thanked Suffolk Transportation for their support. They're also looking forward to the results of their food drives and upcoming theme parade. Fifth Avenue School will host the journey into Native American heritage programs, celebrating native culture. The bucket filler brunch will honor students with exemplary behavior, and the first grade assembly, called the First Thanksgiving, will showcase songs in celebration by first graders. Students also proudly participated in the annual food drive. Mary G Clarkson School will host, uh, had, sorry, had a special visit from author and illustrator Natasha B. Podyar. She shared the creative processes behind writing and illustrating her book, Quiet Kush, inspiring our young writers and artists to fall, follow their own storytelling dreams. Gardner Manor School hosted its Veterans Day breakfast and parade on, uh, November 7th, honoring about 40 veterans. Students contributed heartfelt posters, letters, and poems that beautifully decorated the breakfast area. They're also looking forward to their very first book parade on the 25th, while also showcasing key vocabulary. South Country School hosted a wonderful veteran celebration in the cafeteria, where veterans were recognized and students performed patriotic songs. Afterwards, the veterans, uh, paraded through the decorated hallway as students cheered them on. Third grade classes enjoyed a field trip to the arboretum, and the PFA hosted a very successful basket fundraiser. Bayshore Middle School hosted grade-level spelling bees, the 17th through the 19th today, with finalists competing in the school-wide bee on December 17th. Music winter concerts and choir band and orchestra are scheduled for the 2nd of December, the 10th, and 16th, featuring performances across all grade levels. And at the high school, the high school drama club presents You Can't Take It With You from November 20th to the 22nd, so that's coming up really soon, at 7:00 PM nightly. Join us for this classic comedy celebrating joy, love, and delightful chaos of family life. I also wanted to mention, we recently had our, uh, Interact hosted our annual Fall Blood Drive. Over at the high school, we raised 40 pints of blood, which is the highest in a few years, um, and it said that for every one pint of blood, it could save up to three lives, so students and staff who donated, um, potentially impacted positively up to 120 lives.
That's awesome.
So, that's it for the monthly report, thank you.
Do you have the opportunity to attend any of these things?
The, the blood drive?
Does your schedule allow you to go out and do any of these things that you record about?
Um, well, the blood drive myself, I hosted because I run the Interact Club, but, but yeah, it's a good experience, so.
That's great. Thank you, David.
Thanks, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Just a special thank you, Maureen Versinger and Christina Baumgartner for organizing our Pack the Pantries.
Yes.
I think with our principles, and it's really been nice to see all of our buildings come together to support our members of the community, especially with the holiday season that's right around the corner, so I wanna thank the two of them for organizing that in a short amount of time. Uh, and again, we've had just in about a week, we've collected 10,000 servings or 750 pounds of food and supplies for our parents. I know UPK had their bingo night the other night, and they had donated some of the, uh, the food for that particular event, and the Mary G Clarkson PFA made a donation matching what they had raised at a recent event as well, so I'm so happy for everyone just coming together at this time of the year.
That's awesome.
And thank Maureen and Christina for organizing that.
Well, I'm glad you brought that up. Somebody did actually reach out to me and ask, um, if, if we had any issues with food insecurity lately, and I was happy to be able to share the Pack the Pantry flyer and discuss with them some of the things that were happening. You know, I said I would also just ask how it was going in the schools, but it was nice to be able to say, hey, this has been going on, um, and be able to follow up with somebody with a really positive thing, so, thank you. Okay, then, can I get a motion to, um, exit public and go into executive?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
For the, for legal.